I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um, third order of schedule form, Julie, do we have a form? Thank you. Fourth agenda item, approval of agenda. Any changes in sequence or removal of items? We have a couple things. We have, actually, it's a clerical error, but under 10F, we have the start college now, spring semester, applications that should be the ECCP, the early college credit program.
Yeah, we want to add start college now and ECC.
Okay, okay, so both of them. Okay, that sounds good. And, um, my understanding is we do not, will not be having closed session tonight?
Correct.
So we can do the 14, 15, and 16 of the agenda. So, um, is there a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Also move.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as change on favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item five, announcements.
None.
The announcements. Then we'll go to item six, which is celebrations, Panther Pride Award.
So for those that are not familiar with the Panther Pride Award is, uh, I think that's been four years now?
Yeah, something like that.
The board has been doing that is that, uh, we have a Panther Pride Award that, um, community members, staff, administration, school board can nominate folks for the Panther Pride Award and then it's, uh, they're recognized with a certificate in a Panther pocket for, uh, any type of exceptional contribution or exemplary service to the school district or to the community of Pittsville. So, um, I'm going to read directly from the certificate. So we have Julie, Janet, and Larry here tonight. And, uh, I'm going to read from the certificate for the Panther Pride Award, um, for the family of Linda Nelson. "For unwavering dedication to our community and ensuring our kids have the best opportunity to succeed in their learning through early vision screening. This is vital for our students' academic success and emotional health. Thank you to your family's generous service and commitment in helping to identify vision concerns early on." So, um, I think many here are familiar, and I know we have other members of the family here tonight, uh, with the dedication that both Larry and Linda had to, to vision screening and to how important that was to them. And I think some folks, um, and me being one of them, honestly, until I came to Pittsville here, took that for granted, that that was just like, oh, this is just a box that we chapered going through. But early identification of vision issues can have a dramatic impact on the life of the child. And the donation of this vision screening to the district allows us to do, in time, we have a new student move to the district. We have access to that where we can, if there's concerns that pop up. So I can't say enough about what an impact this is going to have on the students and on the community here, and I can't thank you enough. So proud to be able to present the Panther Pride Award to the three of you in, in the pits.
Three of them for social media and...
I don't know if I'll thunder and sweep the screen.
See, look, it's not as bad as one.
My legs or my skin is part.
Do you want a picture?
Yep.
We have, you got a table?
Please get that. Is that all the stuff still? And the board? And right, one, two, three. Perfect. Can you get one more?
Janet, I lost a point.
That'll be cool. Can you all come?
Yeah.
Oh, you like pictures. Jen, can you darken the screen? One more time. So, thank you. I can just drop it out to the... There you go, perfect spot. Three, two, one. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
I just got one comment from school and stuff. When I was in seventh grade, I had a male teacher. And he made a comment at that time that, uh, weather might change. He says it could go like, uh, warm up now and warm up here. My oldest sister, she was up about that, and ouch. Graduated her, doing the kids, you know?
Teaching.
And she passed away here a little over twenty years. And when she was seven, ten, something, she told me the same thing. So, look at, look at the weather right now.
He thinks he's a seventh grade teacher, right?
This, this, this different.
He thinks he's a seventh grade teacher, right? But no, that's what he's gonna have. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, y'all. Thank you.
I have the thumbs.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, um, agenda item number seven, public comments. First school policy, one eighty-seven, is there anyone who has a couple? It doesn't look like we have anyone for public comments, so we'll move on to agenda item eight of the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda items. Uh, item A, meeting notice certification. B, regular meeting minutes, closed meeting minutes of September eighth. Special meeting minutes of September the third. Financial status and all the reports. Item E, hiring, middle school basketball, interim director of childcare, part-time food service, F, resignations, junior high wrestling, director of childcare, childcare teacher. Um, I would, uh, first of all, any questions about any of these before we move ahead? Uh, seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion to pull item E one, a middle school basketball coach hiring, uh, for a separate motion. Pull that from the consent agenda.
D one?
D.
I'm sorry.
D one. E one.
E one.
Well, you got, I, I'm going off the paper copy, so I get that.
Okay, I'm going to the online copy. So what is it? What, what happened here?
The paper copy.
Is...
What is school hustle?
Oh, there's a season here.
Do the team one.
So I will make the motion to remove the middle school basketball, basketball coach approval from the consent agenda items.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove the middle school basketball coach item from the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye by the move and seconded. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Um, items A and D, A through D, and item F. Is there a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda items as presented? One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, A through D.
No, you can't say that because they're the wrong things. Just the rest of the consent agenda items.
Okay, the remainder of the consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, last of all, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item related to the, uh, middle school basketball coach with rate of standing.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Jessica Winters as the middle school basketball coach.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to hire Jessica Winters as middle school basketball coach. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We need it. Okay, um, item nine, A, district attendance for your update.
You all should get an email with a link to the presentation. Jen, if you want to go to slide three. So upcoming events, Taylor and I are going to catch on this, uh, this component here with our plan for this Wednesday for staff.
Sure. So we are keeping our district, um, that includes like cooks and career professionals and anybody that is involved in the district, uh, district splash of wrench work and February March, um, and our students that are in crane science are putting them on for us. So just the three buses. Um, some of our teachers are driving those buses. Um, I don't know what March we're going to yet, um, but we're gonna, there's been teachers that have been in the district for like twenty-seven years and haven't, uh, been, never been on a tour, so...
Because they're teaching.
I know, so it's perfect for early, it's an early release date. We planned it, um, for Wednesday and, um, it's gonna be a good time. So, yeah, we should take some pictures and wear our staff shirts and so, yeah.
So a lot, a lot of folks were very excited about that opportunity and, uh, previously for the reasons mentioned. So, um, kudos to Taylor and Lindsay for organizing this because three years ago, my goal was to try to have a professional learning day lineup, but we could never get it to line up during harvest. So it just wasn't working and they got creative with being able to get the kids to, because a lot of these kids are in sports, so they arranged with the coaches for them to come late to practice. So anyway, a lot of coordination going into it, but I think, uh, it's a wonderful thing because February is very part of our heritage here, right? And, uh, and folks who haven't been on that tour, um, I think is almost kind of sad, right? So we have an opportunity to get everybody on the tour. Looking forward to it. Okay. All right, everybody's favorite subject. Right, it's exciting, it's like March Madness, right? Report card release.
Kind of.
I'm not gonna lie, we got a lot of superintendents across the state though. The preliminary release, people don't sleep the night before, you know, waiting for that stuff to come out. So the, the preliminary release was about nine days ago. So what happens is the districts, uh, the district administrator in each district receives a copy of only their report card uh, for whatever buildings are, are in, in their realm. And we are then to take about three weeks to review the data to determine if there are any errors. That's why there's an embargo, because they do make errors. So they ask us to check our demographics, our attendance rates, anything, to see if there's a, a significant discrepancy. And they give you a specialized number and you can report any errors on your report card to the state. The embargo will be lifted sometime, usually it'll be the second or third week in, uh, the number, right before Thanksgiving. At what time, at which time they, they will do a public release to media across the state uh, and on the website. At that point, we would have information on everybody's report card. So you, it's a searchable database, you can see all the report cards. Um, and as you broadly, or whether the media makes a big deal of this, right? There's a, there's a release and, uh, papers put data out. And the reality, you've heard me say before, the report card, it's, it's one data point, but it's data that we use to, number one, we use to confirm maybe some things that we have as focus areas, like it indicates, yep, we know this is an area, uh, that we need to improve or continue to improve. And it also confirms things that we're doing well, uh, related to our peers in the state. So, uh, there are some changes this year in, uh, Danny, Taylor, and Les, please feel free to jump in because we went to CISA about three weeks ago uh, for a leadership meeting, a regional leadership meeting, and they went over the report cards at, at time, kind of talking about the changes to the state report card. So I'm just gonna kind of briefly go over a few of those. Jen, if you want to go to the next slide, please. So what you see there is what the front page of a report card is gonna look like, like a sample report card, um, on there. It'll have your score in that circle, kind of to the middle left. And then it'll show that, uh, priority, uh, priority areas piece right there in the, to the right of that, that has the four quadrants. So, um, and it, and it gives a snapshot of various components. And I'll talk, I want to talk briefly about what those quadrants are and how that works because things have changed significantly over the last several years. But talking about, um, some new things for this year. So your report cards for each district are gonna, uh, contain the overall score and rating, school information, demographics, like, you know, your, your different percentages of students. Anything that's below twenty students is not reported. So if you have less than twenty students in any demographic, it's reported as, as, it doesn't count for a breakdown, uh, in, in that area. The statement from the school, which is optional, so we have a, it, it gives me an opportunity to write a little statement about our report card, which we do every year. It's, it's nothing earth shattering. Um, it's just kind of a little intro about all the things that we offer here in the school district. And then the four priority areas, achievement, growth, the target group outcomes, and then on track to graduation. Those are the biggies. And the target group outcomes, uh, and I know we talked about this last year, but target, your target group would be your group that was your lowest quartile the year before. So the lowest twenty-fifth percentile of your students the year before becomes your target group for the next year. So you are scored on how well your lowest quartile of students perform on the test. So you get, I don't want to call it extra points. You get points for if those students perform well. The idea would be this, if you want to make growth on your report card, you need to bring your bottom kids up, right? You want, you want everybody to show growth. Now, here's where it gets, uh, not, not complicated. This is where it's different from district to district. Not every school district is scored the same with those quadrants, with the percentage of your score that those quadrants come. An example would be this. They have a formula, so if you have a district that has a very low percentage of low socioeconomic families or students, so, so more of a property-rich school district. There's a correlation between if you come from a home that, where you have the ability to get tutors or to get kids to things, they, they're gonna score better academically. There's a lot of data that would indicate that. So what happens is those districts are scored higher on proficiency. So they're scored on how many students do you get to the proficient level? Like they need to get to that proficiency. If you have a district that is a lower socioeconomic status district, which were about forty-one point eight percent this year, I mean, there are districts in the state that are eighty percent or higher for poverty. They, those districts' growth is more heavily rewarded than proficiency. And here's, here's the reason. I, I had conversations with a lot of people and they say, well, you technically move it about. No, it's totally applicable. What you want to say is this, if you have, an example I'll give you is if you have a student that's in the tenth percentile and to get to proficient, they need to get to the sixtieth percentile. Telling someone you need to get to the sixtieth percentile is probably an unrealistic goal. Focusing on growth for that student and continual growth is a better way to encourage them to move towards that proficiency goal. So what it's saying is we're gonna acknowledge some of the challenges for districts that have high poverty levels or those things. And we're going to give you more points for showing growth with all of your students. And, and yet, that's kind of the best way I can kind of explain this. The two bottom pieces of the pie is table equal. It's the proficiency versus growth that changes significantly. So if you saw one of those ninety percentile of low socioeconomic districts, that pie that says growth is gonna be quite, quite a bit larger than you see on this example right here. So then they sit down and they calculate all this into a score. So what did they do this year? Um, oh, I want to talk, uh, other things that are on the report card that are not scored. So these don't count to your score would be the course and program data. Like how many kids are in your music programs? How many kids are in theater? Uh, how many kids are taking CTE courses? Those things are all measured, but they're not scored. So you can see districts that, like for Pittsville, a, a significant number of our students take CTE courses, right? So, so that shows on there, it doesn't count as any points. Uh, third grade reading. Um, in the, in the email that I sent to the board this afternoon, kind of talking about giving an overview, third grade reading, eighth grade math. Those are two, like when you go to the doctor and you get your blood pressure checked, you know, they check your heart rate, your blood pressure. Those are two indicators that usually will indicate future success. If by third grade, you are still not proficient in reading, you are less likely to get to that point before you graduate. That's just right, it's not impossible. It just lowers the chance of you getting to proficient. So that's the goal of trying to say, hey, if we can get someone to proficient by third grade, it's quite likely they're gonna stay and excel above that proficiency level. Same thing with the eighth grade math. Students who are proficient in math by eighth grade tend to, uh, like, continue that and accelerate as they get into high school. So those are like two of those, this is what they check. So those, those are listed on the report card, those two things. It'll show down in the bottom line, it'll show you your third grade reading and your eighth grade math and how you prepare to stay there. So historically, I would tell you, we've been pretty close, Pittsville, to, close to state average for reading a little bit below. Math, just sort of going back three to four years, and we have done exceptionally well uh, for math, eighth grade math, and math in general compared to our state, uh, state averages with our peers. And then state and local law violations. So this would be an example. If a district is not in compliance in some component, that, it'll be listed on the report card. Uh, if they're out of compliance. The new thing they're adding this year is they're going to list your test percentage rate at the top of the report card. So what that means is this, parents can opt students out of standardized testing, right? So, so if a parent chooses, I do not want my kid to take the forward exam, they can opt them out. As a district, if you have over a certain percent of your families opt out, you actually are penalized as a school district on your report card for that. Even if it's no control for you, you're penalized. We haven't even flirted with that level, like that's not a concern here. But if, if you're a district that's like, let's say you're at ninety percent participation rate or eighty-five percent, it's gonna list that at the top of the report card. It's just gonna say only eighty-five percent of students. Um, students with disabilities, there are alternative assessments. The, the DLM is an option with the, uh, that still counts. It's not an opt-out, it's a different form of test for students that have, uh, various disabilities that would prevent them from accessing the, the regular forms. So those are things that are just listed on the, on the, uh, the report card page. Sorry, I've been talking fast just because I want to be conscious, but please ask any questions that you may have. Jen, you want to go to the next? So what's different this year? They updated the rating category score ranges. So, uh, to summarize, it was about one point each. So you know those levels to get to, means, exceeds, and significant, all went up about a point. So, so they raised that score to get to those different levels by about a point on average. So if the old range used to be like seventy-one to seventy-eight point five was exceeds, it went up by a point, both on the top and the bottom end. So they made it a little, a little more difficult. And they did that because they normed, they were trying to norm data. So they now are using two years of achievement data to formulate. So once again, they want to see you show continual growth, not one year. So it's, that flattens out the impact of either a significant jump or a significant drop. It flattens it out a little bit, but there'll be two years. And then, so here's what this means, that no scale adjustment for twenty-three, twenty-four. This is effectively what CISA told us to do. You can't compare your raw data from this year's report card to last year's report card. They said, don't do it. So if you try saying, oh my goodness, we were at fifty-three point five percent last year and now we're only at fifty-six, they said, don't do that because with the re-norming, there is no scale adjustment from last year. So for the third time in five years, they've completely changed the parameters on the report card. So we can't compare this data to last year's data. What we can do is we can compare this year's data to statewide trends and areas. So we can see where we stack up according to state averages. We can also see, once again, it allows you to break down cer- certain areas, sub-scores of data that we'll be able to see like, okay, this confirms something that we knew we'd really been focusing on this. So now, yes, this is showing growth for our students. Something I will tell you about the report cards for the high school. A high school, so, so for those that don't know, seniors do not take any standardized testing. So high school seniors do not test. So what that means is effectively, report cards are only data for juniors through freshmen. So we had a pretty exceptional senior class that graduated this past year, right? So their data was on, for their junior, on last year's report card. This current report card contains no data from last year's senior class. That's just, that's the way it is with state report card. So the high school report card is heavily weighted, uh, the ACT is a big factor. I don't need to tell you, this is, that's a, that's cohort data, right? It's your junior class every year, it has a major impact on your high school report cards because of that. Now, there are other components that go into that. Um, the sophomores take these, uh, social studies and science forward exams, that's on there. And then, uh, pre-ACT, uh, where's what else are in, pre-ACT data. So there are components, but the ACT data is a big piece. Attendance data, that's the only thing the seniors actually count towards is attendance data. On track to graduation, uh, tho- those are your data points. But the ACT data is a big piece. Why do I bring that up? Because high schools across the state you will see are prone to fluctuations for the reason of with, with other data, there's enough data points that it kind of, you don't see big jumps. High schools, you can see that because of your cohort, depending on how they score composite on the ACT.
And I would think that that's accentuated in small school districts.
Even more so in small, now I will say this, plus and minus, it works both ways to Mary Ann's point.
Oh, yeah.
When you have, I found out something new this year about the state report card. If you have any class with less than twenty students as a school district, you are the alternate, you use the alternate report card. You don't get this report card, okay? It looks like this and you get a score, but what you do is instead of them scoring you in all these areas, you pick a focus area as a district from a previous report card and you say, this is what we're gonna focus on. And then they score you the next year based upon how that, and the reason is, when you have less than twenty students, to Mary Ann's point, even when you have like us at forty-five, four, forty-eight, if you have four or five kids make major growth, that can have a huge impact in your report card. Or if you have some kids, you know, that are not showing growth, there's wild fluctuations for small school districts in the report card. So that, that's a great point, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I already talked about the test participation on the front page, third grade reading reporting, and then the local, okay, let's go on to the next slide. So the accountability standard setting is, is that, you know, the major changes are variable, I mean, that's what I talked about. And now the state legislated, they wanted to have a more, like, accurate depiction of how our students doing, or in school districts doing. And this is the, this is the reality. You've often heard me say, we want our kids to have every opportunity someone who's going to a school district ten times our size does. Absolutely, and we're gonna continue to do that. The idea would be, they wanted it so that it was reflecting that when you're working in a district where there are multiple factors going against students and you're still showing growth and achievement, that you should be rewarded for that, that you should be rewarded for that growth. The old report cards, when they first came out, did not take that into account. It was just raw data without any of that variable weighting. The value-added growth, as you, most of you may know, probably have noticed it's my favorite part of the report cards. Okay, the value-added piece is they take you in English and in math and they draw a vertical line right down the middle, and that is state average. And then they show you every one of your demographic groups. Where do your students in Pittsville rank with their peers? So here would be an example, students with disabilities. State average is that middle line. Where do, if we are to the right of that line, that means our students with disabilities are outscoring other students with disabilities statewide. Our students that are low socioeconomic status are outscoring their peers. Now, for us in Pittsville, when it comes to like racial demographics, we don't have a breakdown because, once again, remember I told you that twenty or less, you don't get that broken down. But all the areas we're able to break down where we get numbers in, we like to see how are we performing with our peers? So it'll talk about students without disabilities. It'll list on there versus their peers, students with disabilities. So as I was breaking up, that is good data for us to look at, just kind of see like, with similar challenges, how are we doing? Um, you may remember last year, uh, like math specifically on the report card, we were significantly to the right in every demographic, in every area. We have made growth in English over the last several years where we were moving closer to that line. The goal is to surpass that line, right? So that's why that value-added piece for me is really something for us to be able to look at and kind of see with each of our groups. Because here would be an example, if we see... If we see, you know, we're doing well in all areas, but all, maybe like students with disabilities, we're way to the left of that line, we say, listen, we need to look at our supports for our students with disabilities, because obviously, and if we take multiple years of data. So let's say it's one year, we take that into account, right? So we can look at those things, but love that stuff. It used to be closing gaps, that's what they called it for years, was they had a section on there called closing gaps, achievement gaps. And what that means in achievement gap is, what's the gap between a typically developing, so a gen ed student who does not have a disability or not low socioeconomic status with a peer who does? What's that gap? And the idea was to close that gap, right? So here's the problem with that, and why I love that they went to target group outcomes. Because if you're thinking, if you have your group here, so they're comparing, you know, let's say students with disabilities with students without disabilities, there's going to be growth for the students without disabilities too, right? So if you're wanting to close the gap, the only way to do it is to accelerate the growth for the students with disabilities, for the lower group. That's really, the reality is, that's what you have to do. You have to grow at a greater rate than the people that are above you. That's just not realistic sometimes, right? So I really like that they focused once again on that target group and growth in that target group. That makes a lot more sense. I know the closing gap sounded great, right? We want to close that gap. What does that mean? Is it reasonable to me, taking that bottom quartile and we're able to see who those students are? Will we get that data? When we get the data, we can see in each area, because it'll be different. For math, for English, the bottom quartile might be different students, right? But if we see some students that are in both of those areas, all right, we identify, all right, this is a student who needs some extra resources and help. And I will be clear, that is not always, people think, well, that's our students with disabilities, that is absolutely not the case. So there are some of our students with disabilities that perform at grade level with their peers. So it's not just students with disabilities, it is the bottom quartile regardless of any of those demographics. And those are the folks that account for that target group outcome, okay? Incorporating absenteeism into the on-track to graduation criteria, there's a correlation between if you come to school, you're more likely, right? It's like rocket, right? Rocket science, if you come to school, you're more likely to graduate and do well in school. And I say that kind of simplly, but the challenge is sometimes it's getting kids for various reasons to get to school, to come to school, because there's things outside of their control that may be preventing that. And that's something like our student services team, we're a part of the consortium in Wood County for absenteeism, chronic truancy, and absenteeism. How can we help these students and these families that are having trouble getting their kids to school? And it starts with outreach, not letters, it starts with outreach, calling folks. You have trouble, it could be they're watching a sibling, it could be, you know, we do have busing, but sometimes there's a manner of just struggling, and then how can we help get kids to school, so. Okay.
Questions for Jason? Well, looking forward to the public release.
It'll be the December, the December board meeting, because the public release is after our November board meeting. So in December, we will do a presentation like we did last year, and actually, I'm going to have, did the board like, last year if you recall, we had CISA actually? Because I like having someone who's outside the district come in, because obviously, I could sit here and put lipstick on a pig, right? Like you're like, you're the district administrator, you're going to paint this picture, right? Did you like having CISA come in last year to present that? If you didn't, I'm fine with it.
It was nice. We did so many days from CISA, correct?
They, I don't believe they counted that as any of our time last year. They did that as like a comp. Yeah, I believe she did that as a comp. I know what you're saying, Mary, they considered it to be like a courtesy, because they worked on our data with us, is they did it as a courtesy visit.
They wanted it as a courtesy.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I would just say, if they're going to do it as a courtesy, it takes something off your plate to actually have to put that whole presentation together.
Yeah.
I guess I don't have a preference, whether it's them or you.
Okay.
Because I believe that you're going to give us the accurate data and what that looks like. But if they're willing to do it, gosh, what a gift for you to not have to put that whole presentation together and be able to hear it from their perspective too, if it doesn't cost us anything.
Sure. No, and.
But I don't have a preference.
The other piece of that, to that point, Julie, is what they're able to do is, they work with, you know, twenty-six different districts, is they can give some contextual data to the board, like to say like, just, like, this actually is compared to other districts in the area, this is quite positive, let me see this. Now, I can do that too. Like I, last year if you recall, I did a, I pulled data of all the districts in our surrounding area statewide, so I'm not going to lie, it would say me all the time.
Yeah, well, I mean, why not utilize, let's say I see some reports arranged for CISA.
I'll find out, make sure that there's still confidence that the board haven't come in, so that'll be December.
Okay, so I do have a follow-up question.
Sure.
The embargo will be lifted in late November. Are we going to, what's the board's thought on releasing this to the community prior to us getting the slice and dice?
It'll be in the papers, like as soon as they release it, they actually send it to all newspapers will get it, so like, it'll be, I can assure you, the day after they release the embargo, the Rapids and Marshall papers will have it in there, and it'll be out on social media like as soon as the embargo is lifted, so.
Okay.
We would obviously have no control over that.
Okay, so it will be announced to the community?
It will be, and what I've done in the past is, I prepare a Pittsfield version, knowing they're going to release it, that I've sent out through school messenger to all the families, and then I would put it in the Pittsfield record. So I like to pool Pittsfield's in on our report card data. What they'll do, the Rapids and Marshall will do is they'll compare all the districts in the area. And then what I kind of do is hold it on just the Pittsfield data and stuff, so.
And we may lift some of that material, so.
Yep.
People, our task cares know how we shake up.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Item B, student representative update.
Yay! Okay, so first off, we have, we've been doing this in a school with press, I know Olivia Lauren La La was with us for press, who is it?
Club's ghost.
Oh, yeah, okay, I thought it was her person. Olivia kind of takes a lead on it, but basically every week she goes around, she gives people, asks them questions, and records little clips, and talks about things going on around school. So pretty much exactly what I give to you every month, but in a week span, I'm just being that are happening. So like sports, clubs, anything else, fun little clips of things. She said that's a lot of her work on her networking skills, I talked to her about this today. Just like community involvement stuff. A club highlight is the HOSA, so they are making plans for HOSA week. I'm not part of this club, so I'm not sure what any of this means. HOSA stands for held occupation status, isn't it? So it's a new club this year that Miss Sports is leading, so yes. They are looking for some sort of foundation to start for them, since it's a new club and we'll have none yet. And they are going to Marquette, I believe, for a conference. And the next meeting is this Friday.
And can I, this is more, like what, must she teach?
Science.
Okay, thanks.
Biology, yeah.
Got it, so that's.
Nat and Phys.
That's kind of what it's about?
Yeah, she said those life sciences.
Okay.
Yeah.
Biology, Nat and Phys.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just going with some stuff from homecoming last week, so our GOSA days were beach, and the neon color wars, decades, and school spirit. There are just some pictures of Neon Day, we have a lot of neon waves. Decades is pretty cool, I sadly miss it, I'm going to wear my Super Bowl Sixties boots, but, yeah. The powder puff game, sadly for the fourth year in a row, our senior team lost. Score was six to eight, we get a score for our first time ever.
Progress.
Yeah.
They grow.
By the time, by the time it gets to juniors, it's college.
And then the sports, so this is just a picture of us seniors at the football game last Friday, because it's a whole bunch of pictures from football. The varsity team, they won fifty-four to thirty-six for a homecoming game. The volleyball runs three to one in their last game against the Suncoats. And the next football game is next Friday against Chili, and the next volleyball game is tomorrow, we'll try it out. I believe that we all, oh wait, no, tomorrow. Homecoming court, so we had Aurora, Balzine, Figuana, Ryla Sevenek, and Ally Marty, that's one with Dawson Luther, Dalton Dar, Peyton Lee, and Tyus Breeze. And then our homecoming king and queen was Lana Ballach and Darren Luther. Do you have a question?
Well, I'd like to answer sports then. The cross-country.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I had a very busy weekend, and a very sick week last week.
Okay.
But.
But they did really good at the award-winning graduation.
But I had college this morning, so I don't know who I'm going to talk to about it.
Okay.
So I don't know for sure, but I do know that Kane and Katie, they're coming in to do very well. And then you already got some pictures from the dance on Saturday, just, there's a question at the rally, so I'm due, if I listen, there you go.
So we did Strayly Mini Parade, the pep assembly, the high school did their high school games, was Strayly and then the whole parade were all straight.
Yes, and a lot of streaming, a lot of good stuff on Facebook. Who knows to that? And I know that some of the links that I had an opportunity to share on Facebook, people, you know, old people who live somewhere else now are like, well, this is so cool! I remember that! So, if you're useful. Okay. Item C, work goals update. We met a bit of dog in September to set some goals, and we set three of what we're doing the words mentally.
Yeah.
The one is kind of financial attendance, one is communications and community engagement, and then the third is, I call it student achievement.
Yep.
How are we doing on getting those goals finalized?
So as, you know, you and I kind of talked, but sharing the rest of the word is that it's important that we make sure that we have accurate data and relevant data when we're building these goals. So, you know, with the academic piece, we wanted to kind of wait until we got some of this report card data back. And to clarify, by the way, the embargo, we can share that report card data with anybody within the school district. So any, any school district members, they just can't share it publicly outside of the school. So staff will have access, and we actually have a plan for rolling that out with our building leadership teams, first then full staff with the data. They will use that, some of them will use that for their SLOs or PPGs, if they choose to do those, the PPGs, and then also with the building goals. So what we had talked about was, it's better to take some time to get this right, we had to wait for our third Friday count numbers, we needed to wait for some other data, and with us working on the, like Pam, we had the budget revisions are in full force. So I felt like we thought we might be able to come back here with a rough draft for October, looking more like November would probably be realistic for everything other than the academic goal, because.
Okay, the communication draft has been submitted.
Correct, I received that, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're talking about a draft for?
The draft for the board to review. And the only reason I say not November for the academic goal is, even though we'll have the data, there would be the potential with us sharing what that goal is, could be releasing information that would be from the report card, if that makes sense what I'm saying.
That does make sense, but if it could be shared with.
The board. That would be perfectly, it just can't be publicly shared in a meeting, but we could absolutely, I would anticipate honestly, well before the board meeting.
Okay. That, that sounds really good. I just want to keep us, keep us moving, as Charlie Behrens would say.
Yep.
So, okay. So item D, the SMP ratings, which is very positive. We have moved from stable, stable.
Don't be negative, it's stable.
From, okay, you talked about it.
Yes, Pam.
Right, so we met with the SMP folks several times and provided them with lots of data. And primarily, I guess the synopsis would be because the referendum was successful, and that we'll be able to achieve at the end of the referendum of having our goal met of at least twenty percent in fund balance to cover expenses for the next year, that we went from an A negative to an A stable. They will reevaluate it again after the referendum is done, to see if we're able to maintain it where we're at.
To get to that A positive or maintain the.
Right, or to keep it at a stable, or it would fall back to a negative. It didn't look, it didn't even sound like they considered moving us below an A. It's just, you know, the A negative to the stable, but.
Pam, for those viewing at home, for community members of you now, talk about the impact that the rating would have on the district. What does that mean?
Right, so an SMP global ratings is something they look at, our bonds, any kind of borrowing we do, our short-term borrowing, and it helps, the better your rating, the lower the interest rates, the banks, the institutions are willing to give you. I guess it's the best rule, but it says you're stable enough that you can afford to repay whatever loans you have.
It's like a credit rate, an individual credit rating for an organization.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's very good news. And how often do we get rated? Is it yearly?
No, it is not. So the last one we had done was pre-referendum, right before the election, in fact, we had one, that's when we dropped A negative. Prior to that, we hadn't had one since probably two thousand and ten or twelve, around the times that the general obligation bonds were issued for the energy efficiency project was the last time that there was one done. It was like twelve or fifteen, I can't remember the exact year.
Pam, is it safe to say if there's some, like some significant, if they see something in your financial, like where there's a change, right?
Correct, correct.
Then they would review the rating. So it's not like a yearly thing, but it's if they see.
Right, so one of the problems with ours was we started falling, our fund balance started falling, because that's all public record as soon as you file your annual reports. They can, anybody can see that information, so they just keep an eye on all of it.
Okay.
Good.
So hopefully as our fund balance increases, we can, we can go from stable to plus, plus, that would be good. Great, okay, let's move on to item number ten, discussion action items. Item A is policy four fifty-four, reporting child abuse and neglect the second reading. I don't believe there were any concerns with this policy during the first reading, so I would entertain a motion to accept the second reading and approve the policy.
I also.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the second reading and approve policy four fifty-four. Favor, I. Opposed, motion carried. Item B is rule four fifty-four, reporting child abuse and neglect second reading, so I would entertain a motion to approve the rule that supports the policy.
Only motion except for a second reading approval of the rule four fifty-four.
A second motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the second reading and approve rule four fifty-four. Favor signified by saying I.
I.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Item C, Panther Community Fitness Center.
And this one, this was my, excuse me, I did not catch this, there's no action taken on this because the board approved the change in format in the last meeting, so this should have been up above, I missed it. So I just wanted to give you an update, we did blow up the new membership options, probably two, three weeks ago.
Like the day after.
The day after.
I think the Monday after, it just took us a while to get our.
Plan would be, as we get some data over the next couple of months, is we'll present to the board to show what that did for as far as increasing enrollment, or how many members moved from standard to.
Right now, we've had one college person that would have went off regardless, and she's done this college, but she had four extended, college annual, an individual, a senior couple, then I can't remember the fourth. I think that's just an individual as well. Plus we had one regular extended only that started. So we haven't really had anybody make the big switch yet.
Yeah, we're going to keep blasting it out there and advertising, we're involved in anticipate, as word spreads, that we'll pick up some memberships, so.
Good.
What I mean, you know, really, it's a change, nothing as far as those that still want the regular access, to keep that level, so, but we'll keep the board updated.
Okay, and really looking at the fiscal implication for funding, I think it's a real important corollary to that. I think it's a real important corollary to that. So when we get the increased in, increase in participation, we could also get the increase in revenue. That would be good. Okay, item D, third Friday pupil count, that big chart with the little number.
Well, there's no way to, without it being little numbers.
Just gotta take that PDF and make a bigger.
So I only have one question.
Sure.
Um, I think from reading it, we had nine, uh, uh, movement of nine from non-resident open enrollment. Are we expecting a decrease?
From, like, from
From last year to this year?
As far as non-resident, meaning in additional open enrollment, are you talking during?
No, I'm thinking less is how I'm reading it. So the non-resident open enrollment was eighty-seven last year and seventy-eight this year. Is that less people opening enrollment in, or is that less people going out that could be ours?
So I, I guess I would explain it this way. So sometimes, uh, some of our seniors may have been open enrolled in and followed up, fa- fell off the count. Is that what you had, like, did we anticipate losing?
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be the, um, the biggest change. The other change would be that we had a graduating class of thirty
Fifty.
No, thirty-four.
Forty-nine. Forty-nine. They graduated forty.
Forty-nine, yep. And we have incoming four K of twenty-seven, which could be different when you get to kindergarten, right?
Yep.
I mean, that's who you lost and who you got. So that was the other, but
Without a doubt.
It just seemed like the eighty-seven to seventy-eight was the other big shift. Otherwise, everything's pretty similar, actually growing. Like, when you look at last year's, like, third grade to fourth grade, this year, it's a few more kids. Like, they're actually growing, except those two areas. So I just didn't know if there was something, if there was a, I mean, obviously, we understand the graduating class versus four K. It's just how many kids are there? And then we know in four K, sometimes it just grows when it's kindergarten, so we got that. But the, when I looked at it, the non-resident open enrollment, that move of nine, I just didn't know if we were expecting it. Like, there were nine kids that graduated and that's what, like, or
There weren't nine that were open enrolled in and graduated. There were, uh, there were a few, I, I mean, that I could specifically think of. But to answer your question, so when we got this data finalized and with everything going on, we haven't dug deep into the, the reason for the numbers yet.
Okay.
But that is a component that does interest us, especially now that our open enrollment funding is increasing to the value of budget and stuff. So, um, I can't answer that right now, but, but I likely will have some more answers that'll be able to do the board at a later time, once we're able to dig into some of the numbers, but.
Otherwise, again, a positive is each of the class sizes, it seems like, as they're jumping up or gaining a person or two. And that's great news.
Yes.
So there was positive things. Those were just the two areas that were kind of like, huh.
Yeah.
Made the adjustment to have a few less students.
Yeah.
I mean, perfect.
That would be accurate.
Good. Any other questions?
Then I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, third Friday count of five hundred and twenty-five actual students in attendance reported to the WIS data for our student accountability and five oh one reported to DPI for funding and revenue membership purposes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the third Friday count. Any other questions? Then I would enter, um, I would call for a vote. Um, favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, the winter co-curricular contracts. I don't see a motion on here. Do you need a motion or?
Yeah, we need a motion, Pam's correct.
Yeah, do you feel the consent agenda? So yes.
Okay, okay. So, any questions on the winter co-curricular contracts?
You have a chart there. The, the may not need on the JV, the basketball, it's all going to be continued on how many
Yeah, how many people show up, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the winter athletic coaches.
Is there a second?
I'll second, motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the winter co-curricular contracts. Any other questions or discussion?
I'm not, I'm not the board.
Oh, probably.
He's honored.
Because, because you're abstaining, yes, you're abstaining, that's a good idea. Um, all in favor, signified by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? And we have one abstention, so if you could know that, Jen. Okay, uh, item F, which is the start college now, is spelled like the E C C P applications. We have a lot of ambitious students, which is great to see.
Young students, young students.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this, again, looks fairly similar to, I'm just kind of rolling each, so some of the slides to pick themselves. So this first slide, um, the next slide is just the definitions of what the difference is with terminology. That took me a moment to get used to. So early cost credit program, university credits, start college now, technical cred, technical college credits. Um, we work primarily with mid-state, and then we have a handful that go to North Central Technical College due to a large interest in vet tech for us. So those are our two tech colleges, usually pull from. We generally are going through UWSP, which often turns into UW Extended Campus, which is the virtual UW, just because it often has seats open. Um, sometimes students are choosing specific universities for, again, either program-specific things, or they know they're going to UW or recalls, and they want to use that platform, and it, it works out that way, um, that would be the benefit to them. So that's just the definitions there. This chart, and I'll talk about this, because when I presented in the spring, that was a lucky number, but we had a change to what was offered there due to the pilot program courses. But just to show some growth or some changes, that we have a lot of requests, and sometimes those larger requests become a smaller amount of enrollment. Um, but that is chart, I guess, just look at the chart and then I'll explain in the next slide. Um, maybe some of these changes, so if you could.
So, these are, okay, these are students that are applying for this. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're applying for
That's why I want to do one of this, like, because it'll get a little bit more sense than being the dramatic number. So this is going to reference, um, the fall applications that were approved in March. So these are the students who put in applications. We had seventy credits of applications in. If you recall, some of these discussions of these classes were in here because we didn't have things completely established with the auto classes. Um, we had some other classes in here that got pulled out due to this pilot program. So lots of applications get put in, and that's partially due to just if it's at least an option where you maybe have this thought, let's get it in, let's get it approved. And then we wait and find out if this is really what you need for your schedule. Because the timeline is kind of tricky, because when they put these applications in, we don't sometimes see what classes are even available, like, they're online. So it's more so like just a safety net. And then as we work through their schedules, you can see that the actual enrollments change. Now, this was a dramatic change, because a new program from UWSP, which doesn't actually fit into E C C P or start college now, but it, I think this is the important time to talk about it. They offered, um, a free pilot program to talk intro to sociology. We got five seats offered to us for fall, and we filled five, and then they had a few extras and said, would you fill it? And I said, yes, please. So then what we did was some of these students who maybe, so we filled seven of them. You can see that sociology was four requests, so those four moved to here. And then what I did was work with a few students who wanted to cover a general education course and maybe chose psychology or intro to ethics, or whatever one it would be. And I said, you're gonna move into this free one, because it's gonna be the same thing for you later, and you're just choosing intro site, because you know what chance or full sociology will too. So we filled seven of the five offered, because they got to give us extras. That saved us this twenty-one credits earned, which the students are in progress right now. Emma, I was hoping to say her, she's in it, so she could talk to them, she did give me a little write-up. Um, that it's going, they're all kind of doing this course together. The, um, UWSP lady who's running this runs all of the E C C P things anyway, so she's kind of leading with the students, I got to listen to that. So that's been just a newer option, um, that is also been offered in the spring, but a specific course is astronomy one hundred, so revealing the universe. Right now, that's not as interesting to kids as taking, even though it would cover general education, so I'll mark it a little bit more. Because we have a little more time to fill these seats than we do to give you these applications. Um, so that's the change, that's the chart that went from super big down to four and zero E C C P courses, because they're down here. So our kids were still taking a good amount of credits, we just aren't paying for them at all, which is wonderful.
How much is that saving? They're just a bar.
So, I mean, Pam looks up the numbers a lot on my
I would say they're probably two hundred a credit to two to three hundred a credit.
Two to three hundred a credit, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good, yeah, but they're not fair. And then I asked, um, to be prepared tonight, like, is this going to be something for next year? And she's finalizing things, but she said, no, they're planning on offering possible senior courses. So that helps me then know, like, maybe this intro site student, if that's not a senior, maybe we don't do that now and go plan to have you in the fall. But none of that's happening yet. So again, we see the applications, but that maybe that enrollment will change.
Rosa, what's in it for the, you know, UWSP they're offering?
I know, I, I don't, I think it's just, the answer that I haven't really gotten is just to increase, like, the enrollment in general. Because what mid-state likes would be fill their seats, you know, and say they now have, I don't know the number, a really large number of students to a credit right now. So that helps that there. So I'm assuming that's the case, but
Oh, and students start to take credits towards UW points.
Maybe they'll stay there, they'll
Maybe they'll stay and they'll actually roll there, so. So is the reason that none of the, like, braking systems, diesel and suspension is, is because, um,
Those students enrolled in some auto classes, not these ones. And then those students also had new apprenticeships. All of these were requested by students going to new apprenticeship. So they're now taking their remaining credits, like, one or two English classes, all Mr. Combs classes, and then they're on a happy day to work. So it was sort of just, again, a safety net in case at that time, they didn't know if those auto classes were something they needed. So we just didn't need to be in any of those, but we just wanted to have something for their schedule. Because when you're a new apprenticeship, you need a course of really good instruction.
Yeah.
And then that March application, we knew Mr. Combs would be here, but
Yeah, that's a good one.
In case. Um, so this is what's going on right now in my school for our college students. Um, the courses, we get an update really only if students aren't doing well. So if they're close to not passing, I don't have any of those updates. I check in with them. Something we did differently that, um, to learn, I kind of mapped out was at the beginning of the term or the semester, I took the kids through a little bit of a, like, the orientation for online learning, and I just, we sort of took that upon ourselves, because that wasn't necessarily provided. Now, point is going to be coming, she said she's gonna come and do that in person, which is great. But just to make sure the students know all the expectations, and they're on their own learning, they're in the library. So I tried, a lot of them are in there about the same timeframe for this class, so make sure they hop in and just make sure students are truly doing what they're supposed to be doing. It takes a lot to onboard them in the Canvas platform, or, which, you've got to learn lots of Blackboarders and State Canvas, Point, all these other things. So that's been something that we're learning more about, and then I feel more comfortable talking to students, so I can get through those problems faster now, which, which is really helpful. Um, so coming for spring, these are students, um, maybe in the future, breaking it down, I think, would be nice to talk about this, to say, like, how many of these are seniors versus juniors? So this is an opportunity for juniors and seniors. Um, a bulk of them are, are, are our seniors. Many of them have, you know, are taking something here, taking more. Um, the number goes up, because now a lot of seniors are like, I actually have a place in my schedule, because now I'm done with pre-cuplin, or whatever, I can do these other things. Um, so these, again, the, the names, you see genocide, intro site, dual site, like, genocide is intro site, these are two different universities. And so the student is pursuing a different university, and so as, as of right now, we're asking to go to recalls versus, um, university. The number behind is the amount of requests, which would equal seventy-two total. So some of these, um, I do want to talk about, college one oh one is a one-credit course specific to N T C. So the student is planning on N T C, it's, um, to be care of that for her there. It's a very manageable course. They do actually encourage high school students to take that one-credit course before coming to N T C. I don't think, I guess, should just sort of expose them to what they're going to be learning, but not throw them in a three-credit right away, so it's just one-credit. Intro to HESI, um, has been approved in the past, and this is a, uh, it's actually five-dollar continuing education course that they can put for start college now. So this would be a test prep for a student pursuing a program that requires the HESI exam, which is radiography, radi- yeah, radiography or vet tech. Um, and it's giving them access to a portal to go through coursework, but actually it'd be a test prep. But they can earn credit for that in a college, and then we are, we would be approving that, yes, you get high school credit for that.
Well, thank you, because those were my two questions.
Yeah.
That's what I was too. And, and my main question around it was, do, when, when we approve a class, does it tie back to credits in high school?
Yes.
Yes.
So my question is, intro to HESI, what requirement is it tying back to in the, in the credits that, for graduation?
These are all elective credits. You, none of the, none of the start college now early college credit are covering, like, a solid city who wanted to have
That's maybe our medical terminology could cover a science credit, couldn't it?
It, yes. We put them into, the way that they're quoting in the sky, or, what I, sorry. What I meant to say was that they won't count towards their three required science credits for graduation. They're fulfilling those three science credits by taking our classes first, and then you can have these on. And then the way they go come down, maybe qualified into, like, vet, turn under their science category of transfer. But they would not replace the three credits of science you need to graduate, does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
So we make them do those things first. These are the extra, um, to, because you have to have those things to be prepared for these anyway, which is, the other side of this is to take these courses, student, there are prerequisites for some of them. Um, sometimes it's going on your GPA, that's a common mid-state one, just to get into, um, I think, intro to site, get three clinical degree or something like that. Or the low category E C T breakdown, so they do go through that. Um, mid-state comes to us and enrolls students, we get kinds of transcripts, they, they look through different courses they have.
So it's very personalized.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just have one comment about it, and just about thinking where we're going, what this equals. So we've always said, and I'm a hundred percent supportive of it, that we're paying for courses that we can't provide here, right? So we don't, we're a small school, so, you know, we're not providing, you know, certain courses, so. But we would never provide college one oh one or intro to HESI. Like, do you know what I mean? Like, so I feel like the scope is a bit bigger than what we've originally done. Now, am I against it? I'm not necessarily against it. I just maybe didn't pull our current policy to see, like, what we said. And like, just from the perspective of recognizing that we might be broadening the scope around those two versus as an example, again, because we're excited that we maybe can offer a lot of these mechanical things now, so then maybe we don't have to buy them off, but students could get the same benefit from them. I, I'm just not sure if these actually fit, so, like, they just feel like the scope's a little different. So I just wanted to comment, I don't know that that means we should approve it or not. I just want to make sure we recognize that we're like
I didn't, I thought you sniffed our policy, but I don't have this in here, so I'm
Well, and you'll see, like, the numbers in psychology are very, they've been high for a few years. Like, we're looking at how we can offer that at the high school level, like, who can teach it and something like that. So we're talking with a science teacher to see if we can even offer that in-house. I think she's got to take a couple extra credits and stuff.
Because they, intro to psych can be, you know, if we taught AP psychology.
Yeah.
Dual credit is something we've kind of run into, like, we really wanted to offer some more dual credit math. Um, actually, could you, I do have a slide on this somewhere towards the end, about some random, not random, some talks. Um, so this is, this is a way, not to divert, I mean, from
I don't know, you absolutely
Like, to reduce the request for something that we have all the time, which is a psychology. You know, we used to teach AP psychology, that instructor is no longer here with qualifications. And so that, we have an instructor very interested in it, but it takes a while to check every boxes. We have an instructor very interested in changing some of our, you know, our math classes into an AP math class and just offer, or not, sorry, not AP, dual credit. Um, and why we have so many dual credit, this is something that I took a moment to just take. Why we have so many dual credit in our C D E Why we have so many dual credit in our C T E is because the instructor qualifications are different. So to be dual credit for a C T E, you just have, not just, you have to have a bachelor's degree. To do any general education courses where you're going to pull in psychology and math, you have to have a very specific, you have to have your masters, but you also have to have a masters in that specific discipline. So I need a masters in psychology or a masters in that specific math. And that's where our teachers who do have masters degree are like, oh, I have a masters degree, but it's not in the right eighteen years of it.
Yeah.
They used to have something written in there where you could be in progress. So we were excited about that, we just changed that over September, now, right? So even if you're in progress, that ends sometime this fall semester where that is no longer an exception. It has to be completed to be able to teach that. That's also, yeah, some of you went to midstate, which is the frustrating part. N T C, if we were in there, they're fixing, can't be in progress yet. So those are just things that we've learned, which is why we're still kind of stuck where we're at. But we are still trying to keep moving forward with, um, I mean, psychology alone would be super huge. And we know the, the success of an AP class, AP numbers dwindle. But if students learned in an AP class or all semester long with each other, they are getting more out of it than on a computer. Which is the other thing that I'm trying to help students consider, like, I want you to take these classes, but is this right for you? You are in the library on your laptop. And the instructors do a good job of making things interactive, but it's not for every student.
Yeah.
Um, and some students have said that, but if I'm not doing another one, that was not for me. And they were gay to do it in a classroom in college, which is where some of those classes too, like, is this the best class to take? Um, psychology is manageable, sociology, those things are okay to do. But I guess to come back to that thought then, I don't know the, I had it printed, but not in that folder, the policy, the way they're written for what we're approving. Um, I do, like, talk to the other school sponsors often about the courses that they approve. So it'd be interesting to kind of come here, like, what kinds of things that they do. But I guess, does anyone else have concerns with the scope of what's being approved?
Um, I don't have any concerns about the scope, but my concern is, I, I think that is something we should look at. But this is kind of a timely thing right now. I mean, you need us to approve this today.
Yes, well, yes. Um, the, as soon as they're approved, they get sent to the, you know, the institutions and then they start enrollment. Those enrollment dates vary, like, midstates or spring for everything. But nursing assistant isn't started yet, um, and his points is not quite either. So by the next, like, they would enroll before the next school bar meeting.
Okay.
But that will be for October twenty second, which we have another meeting. That for future.
Okay.
There's three C N A, there's, um, there's certain nursing assistant courses in here. Midstate kindly brought back, but during the school day, uh, option.
Oh.
So we got, I did think the students would get seats in them. So that's the other timeline things that are weird. So these applications haven't even been approved yet, but midstate opens up their enrollment, they open on Monday. So then they tell our kids, you have to attend orientation, you have to do this and that. So we don't know if they can do it yet, but they do it to get a seat. And if we don't prove it, we can't, and they just fall. All three of them though, did get to orientation and do have a seat.
Well, and they, I mean, I'm not saying rapid, but they can do it anyways, they just have to pay for it. It's just a case, right?
Yeah. So two of the three are doing it during the school day and fit it into their schedule, which is awesome. And then one is able to do it, we even need to still do that.
Okay.
What percentage do we get reimbursed, I don't understand for?
It's, it's a set sum. They don't even tell us for, like, six months after we apply for the.
But I mean, historically, what would you say, like?
Twenty-five percent?
About a quarter of the.
For only ECCP.
Not for, uh, start college now.
For stuff, start college now.
So that would be the advantage for the family, the families pay out of pocket, there's no re, like.
Yeah. And the three nursing assistants, correct, will give us, those would be, um.
We would get the, uh.
They're getting certifications.
Tech incentive grant certification money back for those students.
That I don't, Stephen filed those, so I don't know.
No, but I'm saying, they will, we will, if they complete, we will get money back for the students that are in those, for the C N A certifications. And that could be, I don't think there's any other that, of, of this conference, but those would be subject to getting money back from the state.
Okay. Um, so I, um, I, I wonder, how does the board feel about approving this tonight? If we have to look at policy and make a change in that policy, that's gonna take two months.
I find approving it mostly because it's a state law, it's not something we made up.
Right.
It's like we always have, and I read our policy quick and it just basically says, make sure you follow the law. Which we have proven, we set the standards for what good academic standing is of this like.
Okay.
Because that seems like we could set up for, you know, I don't know what ours is, it says we have.
I mean, there's nothing in the policy that says that it is a class that we would offer. Like, because we don't offer it, there's nothing in it that.
You can just, for my read, you can pretty much pick anything after this, no challenge, unless we offer it.
Unless we offer it.
Then, then we can say no because you, we can do that here.
And the board could also make an exception even if we do offer it, if there's an extenuating circumstance where the student couldn't take it in there. But that was my, maybe I misunderstood you there, I'm sorry, I could have jumped in and answered that. Like, they don't, the state doesn't put any restrictions on what classes the board can approve. Only that the piece of, if you offered in college, we, unless there was some really extenuating circumstance, we would not approve a course that we already offer in college.
So the other piece, to link that out throughout, is when these courses, so we work with each college's admissions person as we go through this. So what happens is if I'm a student and I want to go to N T C or midstate, I meet with that representative and then I'm always involved in that. So then I know how to relay this information. And they pull up, like, here's your plan to pursue this program, here's the prerequisites, here's the courses you would take. And these courses are chosen off of those, those course pathways. So that's what he, you know, tact, T W, that's what they all do. Um, and they're choosing courses that they know high school students have been successful in, based on what they need to do to get into the program they're looking at, um, and what they've done in high school so far.
So this is, it's a well-designed, you know, it's not just throw something around the wall.
Yeah, yeah, and like, the, the process of it, it, like, prior to any admissions on this, I meet with the students. It, it actually starts with their, you know, before you're planning the courses, but when you get to the point of students saying, well, I've, you know, we don't ever really exhaust options, but when they have hit, you know, I did pre-calculus and calculus, I don't have math options. Which we aren't even requesting any math now. But they want to, you know, fulfill their rigor of their schedule. But by adding something in that we don't have, allowing them to be a step ahead for credits, because we don't have AP psychology and things like that, that other students do have access to in high school. Um, and again, there are courses that they can be successful at. And they, these are, I mean, we could do that in the future too, like, these are students who are taking advanced chemistry. Like, they're taking our in-house rigorous courses in addition. They're the kids taking a college class over being a teacher assistant because they have no information.
Sure, I, I like to hear that.
They're the students who are asking to take a college class and they have a full schedule and they're like, it's not a good idea, but they wanted to try it. And then we did do it, you know, so it, it's, we're not.
It's our high teams, yeah.
Yeah. And then we, you know, when we schedule it, we kind of pencil, like, you're asking for a college class. Okay, but we're going to put here in case that doesn't go through. And then they have individual conversations with me, we look at your plans and then start that conversation. And then we sit down with the admissions person and really make sure that we know what we're talking about.
Very intentional.
Help them, these transparalogy to say, okay, if you choose a point class, where is this going to go? If you're choosing to go somewhere else, state and state, whatever it is. Um, and I did get a chance to get a lot of feedback from students who are enrolled right now. Um, but like, in the past, last year, and the students that I just talked to already, they do, you know, that is what, they're, they're feeling supported that they got that exposure. And then those credits, what I want to do better now, trapping, being a little more salesy, like, did those credits do what we said they were going to do? Did they lay that out? And that's what I think on your quarter, getting some of that data. Midstate has, like, um, contracts with all of the UW system, including Madison now, where they literally can put a piece of paper in front of me and say, these all will.
Articulation.
Our things to your articulation. That's super, super helpful.
Yeah.
That's making that easier.
So do members have any other questions for Marissa? Or are we ready to, um, make a motion and move along? Other questions?
Yeah, by any way, if you want to look into it more in the morning, that's still kind of, yeah, I, I don't feel.
We don't offer it, our kids want it, need it.
Uh huh.
Um, I'm ready to know.
It's not in the policy. I was just worried, I, for some reason, I had in my mind that the policy stated that it was because we didn't offer a class. And that's not the way it stated. And so, because I'm like, well, we would never provide those two things. So I just am like, oh my gosh, we just made the scope so huge, but that's not what it says. So I, I just pulled up the policy too, so.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty-one students and their applications. I would make that motion to approve the twenty-one students' start college now applications, as well as the early college credit program applications for the spring semester of twenty twenty-six.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty-one students' applications for spring semester. Any further discussion?
And I just have one additional question. So the ones at the technical college, if they have three on their list, it's just because they're, they're, they're giving themselves lots of options to pick one?
Correct, so that's usually why the number is a little higher than what you see as enrolled is some of the students. So the way the applications that are attached in there, there's a box that says check if alternate. So if a student knows they have possibly the ability to take two, um, they leave that box unchecked. If they list intro psych, yeah, sociology, but then also write intro sociology, only have one, they check that box. So the actual courses that they're enrolling could fluctuate, they, they have to be written on the applications that are attached in there. We can't just pick something that's not written down. Um, but that's where the change in courses, some things happens too.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. I oppose, motion carry. Thank you, Marissa. Uh, next, item G, appoint delegates and alternates for the state convention. And that would be for the purpose of voting on, um, uh, policy things, the legislative agenda. How many people are attending the state convention now? I know I'm, I'm not, and Rick and Jason are attending, and that's it.
I'm in it now.
Oh, you are in it now? Yeah, January, okay. So we need a delegate and an alternate, guys, a lot of fight it out.
I can't be either.
Yeah, I know.
I'll do it again.
Oh, no, motion is needed, so Rick will be delegate.
Okay. So all we do is a point.
I enjoy sitting there.
Okay, Rick will be the delegate, Chris will be the alternate. Sounds on your call, Panther Media class.
Yeah.
Yes, I just shared a link with you. Yeah. Um, so, um, as we started the press this year and how kind of this came to fruition, I just was, had I had any conversation with a couple gals last spring and said, hey, this would be kind of cool to, I saw their AP lit video or laying video and I was like, who did the editing on this? This is amazing. Um, and I said, you guys should really, like, do something for the culture of the student body. Um, so they came up with this, uh, the press. Um, and so, um, I actually, my long-term goal was to have our business teacher, Jordan Reber, kind of take over a media class. Um, and so he kind of, or he did come to me in, in our September staff meetings that I'd be willing to teach this and learn this and break for the pixel record and do some of the social media updates and stuff like that. Um, and have kids write. Um, so kind of an instructor to lead it, he's going to offer it during term two, where he currently has four kids in his international business class. Um, but it's not going to run that class this year just because of the few, few amounts of kids. Um, so it's going to run during term two, just kind of trial it. Um, during the fourth, fourth block of term two and operate as two separate skinnies, um, which is definitely an area where we need to offer more skinny options. Because right now we have kids that love art, um, that maybe don't want to take it all semester long, or I mean, all black long. Or we have kids in the driver's ed, which is going phenomenal, but then there's nothing else for them to take because they're not interested in art, music, choir, or band. Um, so it's another avenue for kids to take and honestly, technology, editing, um, I mean, it's just something that kids are really good at. Um, and so let's be creative and make new classes. So we're going to trial it in term two, um, if it's approved. And, um, we're going to do a little bit of writing and do some interviewing and work on the communication skills. Uh, I would love to even kind of stand out a little bit more and go to the community and do that piece of both of it. So, um, yeah, um, it's in our state standards as well, so there's a learning objectives there. Um, and then, yeah, this grading scale. So, um, just something that kind of came in quickly. I didn't expect that this would happen this year, but, um, hopefully, maybe in the future, we can learn it more than once a term.
How many students do you have in?
Currently, we have four, we're in cabinet eight. Uh, we will not have problems filling it, um, just because Mr. Reber is learning as well. Um, so trying to keep it manageable. Um, but offering kids to take eight for the first part of the skinny and eight for the second part of the skinny, so a real total of sixteen.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, it's, I mean, one, one of the students is already excited to be, to be in it, so, so.
I would, kudos to Taylor and her team and Mr. Reber for this. This is an example, like, with the auto piece. This was kind of near, we didn't, if it had, had an interest in that media piece, we didn't really have anything cut for them. Um, and this just, it fit within the realm. Taylor pointed out a great thing is that, like, the international business. So with the way they do the registration for high school now, what'll happen is, is when the registrations are put out, we'll run the course that's given to students enrolled. So there's no danger of replacing the international business. If next year, when the schedule's being built, and seventy kids want to take the international business, that'll run again, right? So, so there's no harm from any other courses, it's just kind of meeting those needs and interests of the students. And I love the aspect of the school spirit piece and the writing skills and all the stuff. So kudos to you and your team for making this happen. Was Lana, was Lana the one that was really pushing hard to, was it Lana?
Olivia.
No, but I'm saying for Lana, I mean, as.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Well, and they have a yearbook class, which are in capsule, like that. That classes are one of our most popular and it's only offered to seniors. So like, we have twenty-five in there now, and I think this is just another thing, I mean, kids can't wait for the press to come out on Fridays.
With their experience.
You know, our video this past week was fourteen minutes. Um, that was off, that was given today, I know it's usually on Fridays, but with homecoming, they wanted to add all the school ID's and the parade and this and that in there. And they have live videos and, um, it's just really neat to see some of their creativity come out. Um, and then they highlight, they highlighted areas. So like, last, last Friday was the art class, they highlighted some visitor class and what they're doing and how they're doing it. And, um, it was just really neat to see, um.
Taylor, can you share an example, like, would you be able to share a, with the board, not in, maybe not right now, what I mean is, like, share a link, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to see what this is like.
Can this also be shared with our social media person?
Yeah, because, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so the community can see it.
Yep. Yeah.
Yep. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the Panther Media class.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Panther Media. Any other questions? Uh, um, I'm in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carry. Next, we have the door, V T E. That's the first time I've seen.
People technical education.
Uh, no, but that's the whole thing they.
That's what schools, V T E.
That's a question I know.
Yeah.
Good.
Door.
Yep, so there is our proposal with the quotes attached. Um, so we, um, came together and, um, we are going to replace the other overhead door. Um, just for the sake of, obviously, it hasn't been updated in a while, there's rust stains on it. Um, and the look of, the look from the outside, um, it just needs to be replaced. So, uh, we're going to have window slits in there to add some lighting. Um, if you had gone over there, um, security overhead door, they're coming in with the new window slits on the door that was previously, so it's not actually right right now. Um, right now, there's no, um, lighting that comes in through those overhead doors, unless they're wide open. So, um, they're going to be nice and shiny and, um, secure, um, that was another piece of that. So, um, obviously, the overhead door, that's the first part of that section. We have three bins, uh, so two quotes, and then unable to get the third one. Um, obviously, we went with the, obviously, the one that they just did, which was very, I mean, seamless. They were, they were great to work with. Um, and then, you know, obviously, they didn't add the window slits, um, no extra charge on that, um, to add that in for our other doors. So, uh, we're going to go with security overhead door for this next project there. And then the two, the bottom part of that, uh, quote, or, um, sorry, that first, that third paragraph. the two, the bottom part of that, um, quote, or, um, sorry, that first, that third paragraph-ish, um, you'll see that the two doors in the, um, autos lab that face the baseball fields and the batting cage, um, are looking at getting replaced, as well as the entry that is opposite of the baseball field, faces the greenhouse, um, that's where the students enter. Um, and mainly because, one, there's no visibility, two, we have a lot of really nice equipment in there, the lifts are in, um, and a lot of stuff that can be easily taken. Um, so like, security reasons, um, the hinge, for example, like right now, the doors just swing open, there's no hinge that closes it automatically. Um, so adding those things, um, on those doors, but also the visibility, um, you know, outside. And then where the students enter, um, that is, it's plastic right now, so obviously, winter is fast approaching us, and um, not only for the weather, but also the safety concerns, um, for those students that enter, um, that's where they enter into the classroom or the lab each day, so.
The two man doors, if you pull harder on them, the one that's in the middle, the two, they open. If you, if you gank on them, just because they're sixty years old, like the original doors, so if you gank on the door handle on that middle man door, the door opens.
There's another door that also faces, that's a little bit closer to the other sh- shop or shed that's there, they looked at that door and that did not need to be replaced, it's actually a newer door. Um, so they looked at all the doors on the exterior, and then they recommended that we replace the three that, that's in this, um.
Okay.
So you went into detail with those, I, I like how, you know, we can justify these lab doors.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm sorry, the, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So for the overhead door.
Mm-hmm.
Are, how old is that door?
It's the original, it's the original.
Oh, it's the original, and it opened in nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fifty, it's still original.
It's a little bit bigger, and you'll see, that's why the price is a little bit more than the other door that you guys approved previously. Um, it's a sixteen by ten, rather than, I think the other one was a ten by twelve. Um.
And it's, is it, it's cosmetically, you know, the thing.
Yeah, it's got rustings on the outside.
Yeah, but is there anything that's, is it?
Well, there's been some electrical problems where the door doesn't open, um, that's where the main drain is, so if you have, if you have water or whatever, you need to push it, it will leak right into the door, and it doesn't. Um, honestly, the drain should be replaced next, before we do the flooring repair.
So it all is electrical, this will all be included in, in this?
It will be hooked up even better, they're gonna replace the whole thing.
It's in the bit.
So there's a couple of times where we have to, like, I don't know what they're called, where you have to like put the, you have to tie it on with, um, I don't know, like it's a.
With what?
It's like a thing you could put on the door, so it doesn't go up, because the electrical will go off.
A clamp.
Um, like a clamp, it's like a clamp, like often put a clamp on the door, because the electricals, well, sometimes when the electrical isn't working, and we can't figure it out, so they have to put a clamp on the door, so it can't just open on its own, um, so yes, it needs to be.
It needs to be replaced.
So the electrical hurts, and the door, it doesn't malfunction, whatever it feels like it is.
Are you technically part of the technical, like?
No, this would be family prep for August, we'd fund.
Fund for. I was assuming, I, this is the first I've seen, so yeah, it's, it could come from fund for these things.
Okay.
And that's our capital?
Correct.
Yes.
Cause we do have doors, um, I mean, doors is part of our overall project, just to keep updated.
Okay.
For security purposes.
Um, sounds good. Any other questions for, um, about this bid? It's the over five thousand, so we need to approve it. Um, if there are no other, um, questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the security overhead door, as of any of the projects.
I'll second that motion. Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve security overhead as the vendor for the door project. Um, bakers signify by saying aye.
Well, it's not just security.
Yeah, it's Nicolai's.
Oh, okay.
It's Nicolai for the doors.
There's fire the door, Nicolai's door.
Security doesn't do doors.
Oh, okay.
Nicolai does the overhead door.
So the motion that we have is, needs to be.
Okay, so you can go with it.
You're approving the nineteen one forty-five for both projects.
We're approving, okay. So we are approving the two bids for the door, for the door project, so that it would be the revised motion. Okay, I'll second it. And, um, bakers signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item J, um, this is related to CISA.
Yeah, so if I may, I'll explain, so this is a formality for the CISA, um, CISA was given, um, land into the building, and they're gonna utilize it for train and training facility, and they're required to receive approval of, either, it's either eighty or seventy-five percent of the CISA schools, which we are one. So it is requested, uh, they have to go to all the CISA schools. I got all excited when I first, yeah, this, the, whoa, this is awesome. Yeah.
Can I just back up one question, just in favor for the future?
Yes.
If we, I made an assumption when I saw that, that that was coming out of our tech money that we had, with other things that come with. If we're going to move forward with capital things, if possible, could you give us?
Sure.
Could you give us a meeting of like, like, a meeting notice? Like, so bring it to a meeting, and then we approve it the next meeting, just so that like, we're.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, I'm sorry, now I'm CISA.
So they need, it's a formality, but they need eighty percent of the schools, it's eighty or seventy-five percent of the schools in the CISA to have their board approve this donation, so that they accept the donation, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the certification and acceptance of donation of real estate in Stevens Point, Wisconsin by CISA five.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to certi- to certify acceptance of the donation of real estate in Stevens Point by CISA five. We need a roll call vote for that, um.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, yeah. We're on to number eleven, which is legislative updates.
Well, I, I would share that Leslie and, uh, uh, Taylor, and I'm sorry, I had to remember who was able to go to this one, Leslie and Taylor, and I went to the legislative breakfast at, uh, in Marshville, two weeks ago, I believe it was, we had several legislators there, it was actually a very good turnout, uh, I, I will put in a plug, is that, and they can verify, we are becoming frequent attendees at these things in both rapids in here, and it doesn't go without notice that the legislators and the businesses in attendance have commented how we are one of the few school districts that actually attend these legislative breakfasts, and actually, we got, the district got shout-outs from multiple, uh, stop construction, referenced us by name, and this is a school district that works very well with them for youth apprenticeship, so i- i- it's great for us to go and tell our story and, uh, and be a part of these discussions. I thought it was very informative, we found out a lot about some of the changes with childcare and the budget, um, and we exchanged business cards, like, several folks and legislators had given us cards and asked for our cards, so, uh, you know, it, it's just something that, that I think for the spending the hour and a half, it's well worth it to go to town, so.
Most definitely. C and B C.
Yeah, for sure, and it, and it was very informative, and I think, so I know, Leslie, was it your first one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know if you guys wanna share your comments with the boards about what your thoughts were from the breakfast?
Yeah, just interested to hear, um, updates and, you know, asking questions, and I think just to connect and network.
Yeah.
Business owners and different people, and yeah, it was very eye-opening.
So we'll continue to be pretty fly those revisions.
Yep.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you for, for attending. Um, so item twelve, public comments, it doesn't look like we have any public comments. Uh, so we're to thirteen in future agenda items. Uh, before you know it, we got board elections coming up, and, um, yes, there needs, I believe it's one spot, spot that you hold right now, Julie, is that correct?
It's more than Rick's.
It's Rick. No, it's named, uh.
Rick, oh, Rick's age, okay, okay. So, um, yeah, so you know the drill, I think there's a, if you're not gonna run, you have to do a declaration of that candidacy sometime in December, before Christmas, um, and then file, so we'll talk about that next time, cause that's the next time. Okay, annual schoolwork convention information, uh, spring board election notices, open enrollment policy updates. Uh, we have a special meeting on our calendars, October twenty-second, to certify the tax levy.
Can I ask a question about that? Um, well, do we have the information of all reassessments before that, that, like, the, the coming?
That was actually released on October first, about Wisconsin apartment, but you know, so we did receive that, um, I printed it off today, our property values of checks, it's like six hundred twenty-eight million, so we went up like another thirteen percent.
Mm-hmm.
So by us keeping, going up, it's.
It'll actually lower our mill rate?
Yes.
Well, it's lowering the amount of our general aid, and it's putting more, um, emphasis on property taxes. Because we were coming in property-rich district, and all kind of started with, it went off a couple of years ago, and then all the reassessments has been.
I only say from the perspective in prepping for the twenty-second, because I maybe am a homeowner that had a massive increase, because it got reassessed, the town of Wood just got reassessed, so that's one of our biggest.
Yeah.
And I just think that's some education around it, cause people are gonna, like, if my taxes double again, I, I might just fall apart.
Completely, so now I've been talking to you.
While, while, while just released something that explained a lot of that, so I think. So I was sharing this with Jason, and I think it's really good that the board sees that number five.
Julie, you're ahead on, we're, we're talking, I mean, I already talked about.
Cause they already doubled once with the referendum, and then they double again because of the. I, I think that we need to make sure that we share why, because people would assume, because their evaluation went up, that the mill rate's gonna go down.
Yeah.
Because that's what they actually get told.
And, and I think I, I cautiously have.
Not from us, but I'm just saying, like.
I, I had cautioned some of our towns in its values last year, when there was this fear over the school portion, that eventually, like, you know, the assessments are gonna happen in the towns, that this could, so yes, we, we will have a
Perfect.
A description, WASP, WASP being sent out, uh,
WASL.
Or WASB sent out just today, a beautiful summary, I'm gonna share that with all of you, and then we will draft something that we've already been talking about, like, trying to get ahead of this to communicate. If you've seen this.
Yeah.
Well, the law of municipality, right, fifty percent to sixty percent value of the states, well, they were way low, so lots of them.
Right. So, and we have to keep in mind that there's a difference between assessed value and equalized value.
Equalized, that's correct.
And equalized, I, we're gonna have to see if equalized value goes up, because that's what the school.
That's how our mill rate is determined, correct.
That's how ours is determined, is by equalize, not by assess.
The assessment, though, will raise their overall property taxes, but the equalized property value is, determines our portion of that, the, the, yes. So to, that's something I wanna be able to explain to folks, is that, once again, get ahead of it, is that, when you see this, understand that, you know, if the equalized property values do go up again, and that's out of our control, that will have an impact on property taxes, and the big piece of that, Julie, from your first reference, is because of that shared revenue that did not increase, the pie, you know, the pie didn't get any bigger, with our property values, it's funny Pam says this, because we're fast becoming a property-rich school district, and I say that kinda tongue-in-cheek, cause a lot of this is hunting land and farmland, right? But the state's lens is, we're becoming property-rich, which then they say, well, you don't need state funding, because you guys are property-rich, as if we have a bunch of land hermes around Pittsville running around here, um, so.
Well, we have spent a significant growth too in our community, and I'll share that, um, where the growth was versus what it was, just clear market value increases.
Excellent, yeah. I just wanted to be prepared for the twenty-second, when we put that all in place, with also a message to how to share with everybody what that all means.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect, thanks.
Consider it done.
Thanks. Okay, item F is the WASB and WERSA business boards. Could you just briefly talk about how that's gonna work?
Why did you look at it like that when you said briefly?
Briefly.
I can, I can do it.
Okay.
Because I have a ballgame to watch.
The businesses that were selected by the board, uh, I sent communications to all of those businesses, inviting them to next month's board meeting. And Jen is ordering some, uh, holders to put the certificates, we have certificates in for all of them, that we would like to have the board do a formal presentation to recognize these businesses, that we will, we'll have them all in the beginning, we'll read them off, and then have the board hand those certificates and take photo ops with them and stuff, but we thought it was nice, I've received, uh, um, acknowledgement that they'll attend from all but one of the businesses so far, and I'm gonna reach back out to that business.
And did they all, were they all awarded?
So we had the one receive the WERSA.
Yep.
Uh, and then the other five, so every business that the board, we, the board chose the five to receive the WAS.
The WASB.
The WASB.
Yeah.
And then one received the WERSA's, uh, business partnership.
And, but they all.
Well, it's not so much a competitive thing, yeah, it's not really competitive.
Oh, I got what you're asking. They picked one statewide, like, for the entire state, there's one WERSA that gets the big award.
Really, no, well, okay, WASB, we nominated five.
Correct.
All five, that's the one that's not a competition.
It's just a recognition.
It's a recognition program.
Got it, thank you.
The WERSA one could have been picked as the state representative, they weren't, and there's only one in the state, but we still got a certificate.
Because they were nominated.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Just like Lauren, oh, it got nominated for support for some here.
Thank you. Thank you.
So they're all recognized in some way.
Awesome, thank you.
So, okay, okay, and then we have the hands on in for December. Okay, so since we got rid of fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You can push through here.
I'll, you second me.
Okay, um, bakers?
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's go home and watch baseball.
Tampa's winner, zero nil, top first.
Why is it getting recorded?
So, hug the Jason girl.
I completely tell up for you this year.
We don't have to watch the first complete.